We won. It is now ten twenty, and we thank you for your patience. We have nine members present. We're just awaiting the arrival of one more council member so that we may begin. Good morning, everyone. Welcome again to City Hall. Welcome to Council chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, April sixteenth, two thousand and three. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at ten a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel thirty-five. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Burnson, Glaner, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Wise, Sign, Padilla, members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, and Ms. Grul seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves, and Ms. Misakowski seconds.
Before starting on the agenda, there's been a request by councilmember Grul to continue item number six to April twenty-third.
Members request to continue item number six to April twenty-third. Seeing no objection, item six is continued. Let me also announce that there is one card submitted under item number six, Noel Weiss. We will not be acting on this matter today. You're invited back on the twenty-third. Next item, please.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, item eight is confirmation of a city official, Ms. Lark Galloway Gilliam, to the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families. Public hearing was held in the Arts, Health, and Humanities Committee, and the committee report and recommendation are on file.
Okay, let's hold this matter on the desk and call it special, as well as item number nine, which is confirmation of another city commissioner. We will take these up early in the meeting.
Items one through four are items noted for public hearing. These are street lighting, district items. Council should open the hearing and continue the hearing and ordinances to May seventh. Cards have been submitted on item number one.
Okay, let's call item number one special. On items two through four, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council, so we shall open those public hearings and continue those matters without objection to May seventh. Next item, please.
Items five and seven are also items noted for public hearing.
Five and seven now before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council, so we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call item five or seven special, seeing none. Madam, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate to vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items ten through thirty-three. Item number thirty has been submitted without recommendation, and motion is required. A motion is also required on item number thirty-three, inasmuch as there are two reports on one file.
Okay, members, items ten through thirty-three now before us. These matters have had public hearing. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Members wishing to call any specials, Ms. Han.
I am calling on behalf of Councilman Holden, special eleven, fifteen, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
Okay, hold on, eleven, fifteen. Which others?
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight. That's kind of light for Mr. Holden, isn't it? Just four.
Somebody may want to order lunch.
Twenty-four.
Any other specials?
Twenty-four, please.
Twenty-four called special by Mr. Labange. Any other specials? Mr. Parks?
Eighteen.
Eighteen called special by Mr. Parks. Mr. Reyes?
I'm waiting for your next group of items. I can continue.
Okay. Colleagues, we do have items thirty and thirty-three, which require motions. Unless there's a motion at this time on either of those items, we'll call those special. Let's call those special. On the balance of the items, Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate to vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Item ten, being an ordinance, carries over for a second reading. Next items, please.
Items thirty-four through sixty-seven are items for which public hearings have not been held.
I have colleagues, cards on items number thirty-eight, fifty-five, and fifty-six is requested to be called special. On the balance of those items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council.
Forty-eight needs to be called special.
Which satisfies the public hearings. Let's, city attorney wishes forty-eight to be held on the desk, make it a closed session. Let me call that special. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. We can continue till Tuesday, forty-three, forty-six, and forty-seven.
Forty-three, forty-six, and forty-seven. Request by councilmember Reyes to continue to Tuesday, April twenty-second. Seeing no objections, so ordered. Any other specials? Members, items thirty-four through sixty-seven. Any other specials? Ms. Han?
Let's call item fifty-six special, and I believe we're going to call that out of order since the Cardinals here.
Fifty-six has been called special, and we will take that matter first. Ms. Perry?
Yeah, yeah.
Can hear you. Item thirty called special. Yes, that has been called special. Items thirty-four through sixty-seven currently before us. Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. On the balance of the items, please close the roll and tabulate to vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Items thirty-four through thirty-seven are ordinances, and do carry over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Item number sixty-eight is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold this on the desk?
Let's hold all closed session matters on the desk.
That brings us back to the items called special.
Let's begin by taking item fifty-six out of order. Item fifty-six has been called special by Cardinal Mahoney, and I think he's here to address us on this item.
Mr. President, colleagues, first of all, I want to appreciate the fact that President Padilla, that you agreed to take this out of order today. We have with us Cardinal Roger Mahoney, who was my inspiration for doing this. Today, I want to urge my colleagues to unanimously pass this resolution that we're hearing this morning. I introduced this motion last week, and it calls for us to pass the resolution and send to the President of the United States, supporting Cardinal Mahoney's request that we immediately award citizenship to all men and women in the armed forces that do not currently have it. Last week, I attended the funeral of Lance Corporal Jose Gutierrez, who was one of the first U.S. casualties in our war on Iraq. Lance Corporal Gutierrez was awarded his citizenship posthumously, and it was at this funeral that Cardinal Mahoney first announced that that morning he had faxed a letter to President Bush. I was impressed that you had President Bush's fax number, first of all. That you had requested that morning that the President immediately award citizenship to those who were serving our country. And it was the first time, and I mentioned this to the Cardinal this morning at our press conference, it was the first time I had ever been at a funeral when, after the Cardinal made those remarks, the entire audience spontaneously burst into applause. And I knew then that it was something that touched everyone. And when people hear that we have men and women dying for us, serving this country, who are not yet American citizens, everyone agrees this does not make sense. But I really believe the Cardinal's proposal does make sense and is the right thing to do. So I stand here today to urge not only my fellow council members, but our elected officials up the street, at the County Board of Supervisors, our elected officials all across this country. Stand up. we can do is to make them officially a part of it. No matter how you feel about war, when you hear people talking about supporting our troops and wearing the yellow ribbons and having rallies all across this city and country, there is no better way to support our troops than to immediately grant citizenship to those people who are willing to die for our country. And may I just say that immigrants in this country have made unparalleled contributions to our society, but perhaps no more than those who choose to fight and to die for us. Let's do the right thing here today. Let's urge the President and Congress to grant immediate citizenship to those men and women who are serving our country in the military. Thank you very much, and I know we'd like to hear from Cardinal Mahoney at this time.
Thank you very much, President Padilla, for allowing this matter to come before the council, as well as being heard early. And I am indebted to Councilmember Janice Han for her initiative in taking this step. In preparing for the funeral of Lance Corporal Jose Gutierrez over the weekend ago, it seemed to me incongruous that here we are preparing for the funeral of this very brave and courageous young man, who gave his life for our country, in service of our country, and the freedom of the Iraqi people, and yet it was only after he died that our country was able to award him full citizenship. It just seemed incomprehensible that we're asking this ultimate sacrifice without granting them the ultimate benefit of citizenship. And so I was a, one of those moments when we had all of the family and people together in that church, that I announced that I had already sent a fax to President Bush. These men and women are not here illegally. They're not undocumented people. All of these people are, at least have green cards. They're all legal members of our society, but they have not yet been granted their full citizenship. And so it's a step that we can take because, as we've seen in dramatic scenes on television with, they call it embedded reporters, we have seen the dangers that these men and women have been through, all on behalf of us. So I am grateful to the city council for considering this, and I would urge a yes vote on Resolution 56, so that the least we can do is have the great city of Los Angeles in favor.
Thank you very much, Cardinal. Let me also call on, this time now, Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam President, colleagues. And I joined the Cardinal and Janice Han, Jan Perry, this morning at the news conference where we discussed this in detail. One of the questions that came up to me was, what about police officers? Do we have noncitizen police officers? Well, I pulled up the website, and it goes along the same lines. You can be a police officer, noncitizen, but you're a permanent resident alien who, in accordance with the requirements of Immigration and Natural Service, has applied for citizenship. So what we're looking at is a matter of fairness, a matter of equality, a matter of justice. And I know that Janice Han was touched by the funeral service that she attended, and sadly, over 100 funerals for American veterans who have been killed in this war, in addition to other allied forces who have suffered loss of life. So I support this measure, and I think it's the right thing. It's sad that the soldiers who receive citizenship after their death, their families will remember that. It'll be a tribute to them, but they didn't enjoy the benefits that we all enjoy in this country. The benefits of voting, the benefits that the United States grants to citizens. And there is definitely a distinction between being a citizen and the rights you have and the benefits you have as a citizen, and not being a citizen. So the brave warriors that have been killed, some citizens, some not citizens, but all people maintaining what we enjoy, democracy, freedom, independence in this country. And as this war continues and it winds down, and the troops start to return home, it'd be nice for them to receive the hugs and kisses from their family members and a letter from the United States that they're now a citizen of the country that they fought for, that they lived in the desert. And those of us who watch this war on television, and I never thought that we would see a war televised from the battle lines, but as we've seen this war unprecedented, what those young men and women have gone through, and whether it be someone who makes the wrong turn, gets ambushed, and becomes a POW, and goes through torture, or the soldiers in the tanks, the Air Force, the Navy, the Marines, the Special Forces, they all deserve this recognition, and they all deserve this right of citizenship when they return to the land of opportunity that they've all come to, to enjoy what we all enjoy every day, the American dream. So Janice Han, congratulations for bringing this forward. Cardinal Mahoney for the inspiration. And I know the difficult task of a service, of a funeral service for a veteran when the hearts pour out. And they say that things sometimes turn good, and if anything's turned good, it's this motion, this resolution, that people who enjoy our freedoms, people who fight for our freedoms, nonresidents, they will be able to enjoy that freedom. So the green card soldier will become an American citizen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Chair recognizes Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to support this. As a person who seconded the resolution, I want to thank Councilman Han for putting this together, and again, the inspiration by Cardinal Mahoney. You know, colleagues, this is one of the largest cities in this country, and it's also one of the cities that has the largest population from other countries residing in this city, vast majority being immigrants. The contribution to our economy, the contribution to our security, as demonstrated by the ultimate sacrifice by the green card soldiers, is one in which cannot be diminished. So by asking the President to provide that citizenry now, as opposed to later, is a significant gesture, not only for those who are in the battle lines, as has been eloquently articulated by Councilmember Zine, but also by all of those who are workers in our restaurants, in our offices, in our buildings. These folks are contributing to our economy. These folks contribute to our army services. They are human beings. They are people. They are not invisible, and they should have the dignity of being treated as a person. So for us to grant this green card status, a citizenry role in our society is only just. I would hope that we eventually come to recognize that the world economy makes everyone a citizen in this planet, and that we are connected very close by. When we can be observing a war in our living rooms, a half globe away tells you how tightly connected we are as a society. So it only behooves us, the city of Los Angeles, one of the largest cities in this country, and perhaps one of the largest in the world, to make this statement is a significant one. And again, I want to thank the Cardinal for that inspiration, and I would hope that this leads to a path of world peace, as we continue to consider everyone as human beings with dignity despite or regardless of what country they are from. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Chair recognizes Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. A great writer once said that the nation is a daily plebiscite, and that we have to vote every single day to remain or to be a part of a nation. And I think there is no stronger vote than those who, every single day, offer their lives in the service of this country. As many of the Filipino veterans today here know, my own grandfather, when he came from Mexico during the Mexican Revolution, he lived here in Los Angeles for decades before he became a citizen. And he only became a citizen because he fought in World War II and was given that offer and was given that option. And he became a U.S. citizen after fighting in the Philippines during World War II alongside many of my brothers that are here today, who themselves deserve the same dignity and respect that all of our veterans received, and that many of your colleagues who still today do not have the benefits of our veterans, you still deserve that as well. And I know we've been on record, as a council, urging the federal government once again to do that. But thank you to Cardinal Mahoney. Thank you to Janice Han. Thank you, Miguel Contreras, as well, for your support. People shouldn't have to die to become citizens. We should do it because it's the right thing, not only because they're willing to die, but because people are here every single day, working for the prosperity of this country. It's also those who work every single day, day in, day out, those that Mr. Contreras represents, many working people who still labor without the benefits of citizenry, while making sure that we have those very same benefits. I anticipate this will be unanimous, but thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. The chair recognizes Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, the item we're considering today, and certainly the message that Councilmember Han and the other civic leaders spoke of prior to the council meeting in their press conference, is a tribute to Marine Lance Corporal Jose Gutierrez. For my constituents, this takes on particular significance, knowing that even though he was an orphan from Guatemala, when he came to the United States, he lived in several foster homes, and for a significant time, he lived in Pacoima, which is in my district, and attended San Frando High School, which is where I graduated from. And this is prior to being placed with the family in Lomita, where the services were held last week. But colleagues, to give an example of where my community is coming from, there are two parks in my district, city parks named after individuals, named after Latino icons or heroes. One you may be familiar with is Ritchie Valens, Ritchie Valens Recreational Center. The other park in my district, which was renamed within the last 10 years, is David Gonzalez Park. David Gonzalez, a Medal of Valor winner from World War II. I think it's symbolic of the spirit of our community, of the respect and regard our community has for military service in this country, in this country. And when we have the example of Lance Corporal Gutierrez giving the ultimate sacrifice for our country as an immigrant, as a noncitizen, I think it does serve as a wake-up call for the value that we, as a society, place on that sacrifice and that service. Lance Corporal Gutierrez loved this country, and this tribute and honor we bestow upon him is due him for his sacrifice. But let his death not only, not be in vain, not only for the military effort that some people may agree or disagree with, but as a social wake-up call for how we treat the 37,000 other noncitizen members of the armed forces. You know, when we take our oath of office, and when people join the military, and when people take the oath of citizenship to this country, one common element of that oath, as we raise our right hand, we say, "We will support and defend the Constitution of the United States." Thirty-seven thousand noncitizens willing to support and defend the United States, the Constitution of the United States, with their life. Much more of a risk, much more of a sacrifice that many U.S. citizens choose not to do. U.S. citizens have the choice of whether or not to join the military. Many choose not to. When you compare that with noncitizens choosing to put their life on the line, and, as is the case here, give their life for this country, I think it is not only to do right by Lance Corporal Gutierrez that we should support this action, it is to do right by those 37,000 noncitizen members of the military. It is to do right by our country and what it supposedly stands for. So that's why I stand in support of taking this action and urging our legislature to take the similar action, but ultimately, asking our federal representatives to do right by all the people affected by this and grant that citizenship, not after a life is lost, but during the life of a soldier who can use a part of their life to rejoice in the fact that they are United States citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Chair recognizes Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Han for bringing this forth today, and thank you to his eminence for reminding us on a regular basis of our moral and spiritual side that we must respond to as elected officials. And I wanted to say that all of my colleagues are correct, that recognition should be given to people while they are alive, but that we should appreciate them for the fact that they love our country so much that while citizenship is pending and yet not yet given, they're still willing to risk their lives on our behalf. And for that reason alone, I want to say that I'll be voting affirmatively today for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to also rise in support of this and also welcome my Cardinal to the chambers. I think it is so important, as we've said earlier, to reward people when they can appreciate it. I also am very pleased to see that this goes beyond just those serving in Iraq, but also those of active duty upon their honorable discharge. And I think that's the only way to right the wrongs that have gone in the past. Miguel Contreras and I were talking recently on a much lighter issue about the driver's license bill, and he coined that phrase I used recently, that if you can drive a tank in Iraq, you can probably drive in California. But this is even more significant in the sense of citizenship that people deserve. They are, and I think most of us were shocked when we saw the numbers in the paper, that that number of noncitizens are in the military, giving their lives, protecting the very rights that we take for granted at times, but they certainly are striving for. And so I really appreciate Janice for doing this and the Cardinal for being the stimulus, and we certainly want to support this as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Galanter.
I think it's a foregone conclusion that this is going to be a unanimous vote, and so what I wanted to add to this, since just about everything else has been said, is that I hope that as we do this, and as the public sees us do this, that this will improve our attitude toward immigrants to this country. I've been horrified at the number of people I still hear saying to me, "We shouldn't be letting these people, whoever these people is, into our country." And I think that the lesson of this whole exercise we're doing today is that these people are our people, and we really need to clean up our attitudes toward the immigrant communities here in this city, which is 99% of us. And so I hope that this is just the beginning of a communal effort by the entire community to acknowledge the contributions of- to acknowledge the contributions of people who have come to the city of Los Angeles and the United States of America from other countries in the world and made wonderful contributions here at home. People should not have to die, and as Eric said, they should not have to die in order to get recognized. People should not have to die or lose family members in order to gain some empathy from the rest of the community for the daily struggles that families throughout the community go through to put food on the table and to find decent housing. And so, of course, I'm going to join in support of this resolution, as I know everybody is. But I just want us to see it in a larger context. This is not about war. This is about people, and the people who live here and the people who will live here in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Lavang.
Oh, and thank you very much, Madam President. And Alex, when you were speaking over there, you reminded, yesterday, I was sworn in by the city clerk for the next term that I'm in, and I stood in the steps outside on Spring Street, exactly where my grandfather, who was an immigrant from Ireland, stood when he was a Los Angeles police officer. And he also served in the United States Army in World War I. I have a picture in my home of him. And now, because of the tragedy for all those who have to serve, and God bless those who serve this country in the armed forces. Without the armed forces, we can't have that. I had great discussions with Marines in San Diego prior to our discussion about the position we were going to take on the impending war in Iraq. And one Marine told me, who was from Twenty-Nine Palms, said, "You could think what you want, but that's what we fight for, for people have the ability to think what they want." And I was very honored by that Marine from Twenty-Nine Palms who said that to me. And now with the unfortunate one of the first deaths, the Lance Corporal Gutierrez of Lomita, right here, and then our Cardinal, who I like to credit as an activist, doesn't miss opportunities, faxed a letter, faxed a letter, which is a simple act. And occasionally, I miss Mass, and Cardinal, I got to confess in public here, I do that, but he told me I do some good work during the week sometime, so it affords me that to miss Mass on Sunday. But anyway, enough of the confession. We have the opportunity, you know, to send a message to request this be part of the program. And I like what Ruth Galanter said, because we're all immigrants. We're all from somewhere, someplace, at some time, and that's what welcomes us. And I remember when I was walking through the streets of Germany in a village, there was a big, big poster, and it was in German, and it said, "Welcome to Stranger," which was so important to hear that translation, which is something I try to live off as I work in this great city of diversity of Los Angeles. And now we have a chance to send a message, that Janice Hahn is proposing, to say that those who serve our country and the armed forces should have the right of citizenship. And I think all Angelinos, from San Pedro to Chatsworth, would certainly support that, from Boyle Heights to Venice, because it's about the people of Los Angeles, and everybody serves. And I know one time, we also sometimes talk, and if you talk to any Marine, they're going to tell you they're a United States Marine. That's all they're going to tell you. They're not going to tell you that they're a particular Irish Marine, or a French Marine, or an African-American Marine. They're going to tell you they're a Marine because they're a United States Marine. So I also wanted to say, God bless the Marines for what they have done in service in any conflict that the United States has been involved in. I rise to thank Cardinal Mahoney for, again, his activism, and also I certainly rise, as often as I can, to thank my colleague from the 15th District, who comes from the district with great ideas that help us make good decisions. Thank you, Janice Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Lavang. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a lot to add. All of my colleagues have spoken so eloquently this morning about the importance of supporting those individuals who are willing to put their lives on the line for this country. And we should similarly acknowledge their commitment to the United States of America. And I want to say a particular thank you, which we have all acknowledged, Councilmember Janice Hahn, Cardinal Mahoney, and also Miguel Contreras here from AFL-CIO, and all of you in this room who are supporting this effort. It sends a clear message from those of us in the City Council that people who are willing to put their lives on the line for us, that we should give them that right, which they have so, I think, earned from all of us, our respect and their ability to become a citizen of the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Clerk, the matter is now before us. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Holden has pressed his button. Let's hear for Mr. Holden.
Madam President, members, I read this motion, and certainly is something that we should vote for and send off to the President of the United States, urging him to take appropriate and prompt action to comply with the request of unanimous vote of the city of Los Angeles, thereby awarding citizenship to those individuals who were not serving in Iraq, and to those, of course, who gave all they had to give, that God gave them, and that's their life. They should be citizens, and in death, as they were brave men and women fighting for our freedom and life. I also want to say that we should amend this motion to include all the immigrants who served in the military and who were honorably discharged from the military. And I want to offer such an amendment. They were honorably discharged from the military after serving their tour of duty, and they should be granted citizenship as well. I understand that it says here a favorable discharge, but I don't mean a general discharge, I mean an honorable discharge, and that's, of course, left to discretion of the President of the United States. And I would suggest, however, that those who enlist for a period of time, they finish their duty, tour of duty, upon their discharge, and it should be honorable, they should be automatic, be citizens of the United States of America. And so if you want to accept those amendments, the friendly amendments I so offer, and I agree, never thought.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The Chair recognizes Mr. Burnson.
I really wasn't going to talk, because I think it's all been said, but I think that Nate has really touched on something that needs to be addressed. You know, I've read in the paper from time to time about people that were recognized and given citizenship in World War II, in the Korean War, and everything else years after, or when they've passed on or died for their country. But actually, anybody who serves should be recognized, or anybody who has served in the military and been discharged with an honorable discharge should be recognized. People who are willing to lay it on the line for us and defend our country and our way of living should be granted the right to be part of a citizen of that country. So I want to commend Janice for bringing this in. I want to commend the Cardinal for addressing this at the funeral, and it's something that's long past due. It should be done immediately on all of our servicemen who have served, who were discharged with a honorable discharge, who were immigrants and not citizens at the time.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. We now have before us the matter, as amended with the friendly amendment from Mr. Holden and seconded by Mr. Burnson, to include all past veterans of service to this country in, no matter what conflict they served. Mr. Clerk, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That matter is unanimously approved. It will be sent forthwith. Thank you very much. Members, we've had a request to recess briefly, this council agenda item, to go into the special council meeting, call the roll, so that we can continue the one item on the agenda. So with everyone's indulgence, could --
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Gruel, Hahn, Holden, Lavang, Mesakowski, Pacheco, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Wise, Zine, Padilla, fourteen members present in the quorum, Madam President.
All right, and what is before us?
Item number one is an item for which public hearing has been held. The Arts, Health, and Humanities Committee report and recommendations are before you.
And, Mr. Reyes, did you want to make the motion to continue this until next week, Tuesday?
Yes, please. I'd like to have this continued for Tuesday.
All right, that is the request. Without objection, that will be the order. We will continue it. Let us now adjourn the special meeting of the council and return to our regular meeting.
Back to the items called special. Item one is special inasmuch as there are cards submitted.
All right, and in the meantime, I also like to ask that Item 1653 and 58 go forthwith. And, Mr. Clerk, I think we have members of commission appointments, and we usually take those out of order. Why don't we do that at this time?
Item eight is the confirmation of Ms. Lard Galloway Gilliam to the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families.
All right, is Ms. Gilliam present? Please come forward. And we do have a committee report recommending approval and confirmation of this. Is any council member wishing to speak? Seeing none, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Parks.
I just wanted to rise and just say thank you for serving and also representing the area of the city that certainly has its share of youth issues, and we certainly looking forward to you bringing some dynamic leadership to that committee. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right, with that being the only comment, the matter is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. That matter is approved. You are confirmed. Thank you for your service.
Thanks so much.
Next item, also a confirmation.
Item nine is confirmation of Ms. Mary Ann Paxabijan to the Human Relations Commission.
Is Ms. Paxabijan Pimenta here? Thank you. Members, this is for the Human Relations --
Good morning.
Good morning. Is there -- this is also a confirmation and recommendation by the Education and Neighborhoods Committee. Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I just want to acknowledge that you have your cheering section with you this morning. I just want to acknowledge that you have such strong support from Allen Freely and also the community and your family. I understand your family is here, members of the community is here. So I just wanted to acknowledge, you get that kind of support, that's very important. If you want to take a bow, the family, people, the members who are here supporting, thank you for being here. And with that kind of cheering section, you definitely need an eye vote on this one.
Thank you so much.
There's no one else wishing to speak, so this matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That matter is approved. You are confirmed. And again, thank you for your service to that commission.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, and just to reconfirm, Item 56 was sent forthwith. Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Back to Item one.
All right, Item one was called special for public hearing and cards that were submitted. Let me call forward at this time, Mr. Al Vedari and Hugo Pacheco. If those two people are present, want to address us on Item number one, now is the time to come forward. Mr. Veduri, Al Veduri, and Hugo Pacheco. Apparently, they are not remaining in the audience.
They're here on special ones.
You know, I'm sorry, I believe this was special when they just missed called the cards. All right, then, Item one is now before us. A motion is required. This is Alighting District and Council District Two. Ms. Gruel moves. Mr. Lavang seconds.
Madam President, we're continuing the hearing in ordinance to May 7.
All right, then that matter will be continued for the hearing notice. Next item.
Item number 11 called special by Councilmember Holden.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Holden.
Maybe the staff can come and explain to us the debt policy, Madam President.
Do we have the CAO? Here she comes.
This debt policy is very important to the taxpayers of the city of Los Angeles, and why you have this variable investment of monies. Would you explain in detail, to the extent that you possibly can, what this policy is and what changes you propose to me?
The current debt management policy the city was adopted in 1998, and there are two sections in there that speak specifically to variable rate debt, as well as to interest rate risk mitigation, which we refer to as swaps, as one of those instruments. And there are very vague paragraphs about the ability to issue this type of debt. As we move forward with the Convention Center refunding, we realized that these paragraphs were insufficient to guide staff into the various complications of these types of debt. So we did a remarkable amount of research and investigation on what other municipalities were doing, what the rating agencies would like to see. And we came up with this debt policy, not only as guidelines for the CAO's office, the treasurer, city attorney, and the controller to use, but also as a mechanism to protect the taxpayers by putting in extensive monitoring and reporting guidelines. For example, currently, the wastewater program has commercial paper, and we report on those frequently. But what these two policies do is set down specific parameters on the monitoring and reporting of this. The CAO's office will be reporting monthly on variable rate debt, as well as how the swaps are doing. And then also, the controller's office has a very important monitoring and reporting responsibility. So the CAO felt that the staff that was dealing with debt needed very specific guidelines and parameters on what we should and should not be doing. And one of the main things we are not doing is speculation on these swaps. This is purely as a hedge against variable rate debt. And I only say that because, in the past, it has not been the case with other municipalities. But these follow the same guidelines as what is accepted by the federal government and state government for good practice in variable rate and swap policies.
Well, I am still as confused as I was before. Orange County had a big problem on those variables in paper. You're saying public sanitation is floating some paper out there?
Yes, the wastewater system has had a commercial paper program since its inception, and that's used and turned around as construction is completed. It's a way of lowering the cost of construction and then financing it out with long-term debt. And the voters approved that, I believe, sometime in the late 80s, and that has been a continuous part of our program.
Go ahead.
What we're doing now is moving the general fund in that direction. The difference between interest rates on short term and long term is so great that the cost of the city to fix out is enormous. And so the interest, the variable rate debt allows us to have lower interest rate, and then the swap allows us to hedge against that interest rate. The swap is only there as long as the variable rate debt is there. So what that does is it provides protection to the variable rate debt by making a synthetic fixed rate. So what you're doing is you're paying out variable rate debt, and on top of it, you're putting out a fixed payment. And although the variable rate debt may go up and down, the synthetic fixed rate will keep it even for budgeting purposes as well. On top of that, we have a liquidity facility, which is a type of insurance that's provided by banks up to the amount of variable rate debt. And then we also have the bonds are insured, which makes them a triple-A credit. So the credit amount would be very high for the city.
An important element of what we're proposing with respect to this new debt policy, an important distinction that must be made, that you've raised the Orange County issue, and it's been raised by other members of this council. The Orange County problem was in large part due to the fact that a city official at that time, well, a county official, was handling the county's investments without fully disclosing and reporting on an ongoing basis to the governing body. As Natalie stated, an absolute essential element to what we're proposing is that we come to your council through budget and finance on a monthly basis and give you an ongoing status report. We're working in partnership with our city treasurer, our city controller, our office, and our financial advisors. We have, over this past year and into next year, we've aggressively, in a very structured, and I think in a very careful way, but yet aggressively, refinanced a number of our debt, you know, pieces of our debt, to the point where we saved $30 million this year and $30 million next year. We're trying to take advantage of the current financial market, the advantages in the financial market with the low interest rates, but at the same time, have a structure so that it's done with the light of day, so that your council, through, again, budget and finance, and subsequently full council, will be advised on a monthly basis exactly what the status of our debt is, what we're doing to ensure that we protect the assets of the city of Los Angeles, and we do so with full disclosure.
When the variable interest rate -- When the variable interest rate change where it's not to this, that doesn't serve the best interest of the taxpayers of the city, then how do you correct that? What's your correction factor?
The way that you correct that is you fix the debt out. You come back to the mayor and council quickly, and you fix the rate back to fixed rate debt.
But that can be done very-
And the fixed rate debt, at that point in time, is much higher than the variable rate when you bought into the program.
Yes, but the long-term cost would probably be less.
Less than if you stayed in the variable program, yes, but not less if you went into a stable program initially. Well, I'm just not going to take up any more of the time, but let me just say this. You're talking to the taxpayers out there, and it sounds like, no offense to Greeks, but it sound like Greek to them as it does to me. All I know is that when you have a variable interest rate, people lose their properties under, you've got to refinance in five years, there's a variable rate, there's low buying in, but at the end of those five years, it hits the ceiling, okay? And they don't have any way of modulating that, turning it around, reducing that interest rate. At that time, it may become fixed. Fixed may be eight, nine, ten percent, eleven, twelve percent, whatever the market is at the time. That's all they understand. And what I'm saying here, how can you do, finance our money, which is uniquely different, when the people who take care of our debt are in business to make money? So I'm just sitting down.
My last comment is that the structure we have before you today, and the fact we have a number of parties throughout the city working together to closely monitor this issue, has the necessary safeguards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fajoca. This matter is now before us, as recommended by Budget and Finance.
I just don't want another Orange County, that's all.
Open the roll.
Great.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes, that matter is approved. Next item.
Item number fifteen called special by Councilmember Holden.
Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
All right, no further questions on fifteen.
All right, fifteen is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That matter is approved. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item eighteen called special by Councilmember Parks.
Chair, all right, Mr. Parks has no questions on that matter, so we can also vote on this, which is the Housing and Community Development Committee report. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That's approved.
Item twenty-four called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Chair recognizes Mr. Labonge.
Yeah, I called the special members to let you know, and surveying the district, this is a vacant piece of property of what was to be a future widening of Fountain Avenue, which is never going to take place. Working with the neighborhood council and the other groups in the community, so this is an opportunity for a bought-in community garden just west of Highland, and I've worked closely with Mr. Garcetti and his staff on this. I thank you, I asked for an eye vote, a good opportunity to survey those small parcels, maybe no bigger than this council chamber, half of it, but it's worthy for the community to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Item twenty-four is before us, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That matter is approved.
Item twenty-seven called special by Councilmember Holden.
Chair recognizes Mr. Holden. Item twenty-seven.
This is a consent decree report all over again, and I'd like to have someone come forward and tell us about what the changes are and improvements are, and whether or not we're in compliance, and if not, when will we be in compliance, and how many more police officers we have to take off the street in order to be in compliance, and how much crime will go up if we do that.
Barb Garrett with the chief legislative analyst. This is our normal status update regarding the consent decree, and it tracks a number of ongoing issues as we move towards compliance. You will see for the first time that we believe we have achieved compliance with the ten-day processing of complaints. However, I have noted that that needs to be a little tempered. The independent monitor has identified an anomaly in how we're monitoring that. We're in discussions with the independent monitor on that issue to resolve it. We are in compliance with the five-month investigative goal. The monitor has indicated that to us, however, the U.S. Department of Justice has a concern with how we're measuring that, both and the independent monitor, so we're in discussions on that, but we are clearly moving forward. We are in compliance with the Critical Incident Investigation Division, investigations of categorical uses of force. We have improved substantially in that area, and we continue to be in compliance. For complaints, we are having some difficulties with investigations and meeting all of this high standards for internal affairs group investigations. We have not fully looked at chain-of-command investigations. We, it looks like there are no substantive issues, but we have not done a thorough review through an audit to fully understand whether we're in compliance or not with those investigations. As requested last month when we were here, count-
On that point, explain why you haven't not done the audit, you have sufficient time to do it.
We continue to have difficulties with the audit division. We are working to remedy those issues. As discussed with you when we came and asked for the unfreeze, we needed not only the staff that had already been authorized, made available through an exemption of the freeze for those positions. In addition, we expect in next year's budget, there will be additional positions for the audit division. Due to the reconfiguring of the gang units, there has been a switch temporarily of some of the audits that are required to be conducted by those units under paragraph 131 to the audit division. That has added to their workload. They reported to the committee, and they will be back next month with an update on where they are, what audits we will complete this year, and which audits we will not have completed this year. It is not anticipated that we will have a complaint investigation audit completed. The independent monitor also has not completed an audit of chain-of-command investigations that is in process, and we hope to get that sometime in the summer, the results of where that is and what that looks like. For complaints, one of the issues that was brought up by Councilman Parks in our last meeting was the volume of complaints, and were we collecting all complaints when people came in and complained, which is the policy of the Los Angeles Police Department. The Police Department is currently undertaking integrity audits. Those are the sting audits that are required under paragraph ninety-seven to monitor compliance. The audits that we've looked at in 2002 illustrated compliance. However, we have not seen the audits completed in the fourth quarter of 2002 or this most recent quarter of 2003. We requested that LAPD come back to the committee in May and report on the results and where they are with those issues and the remedies that they plan to put in place. Noncategorical uses of force, search warrants and arrest procedures, we continue to be in noncompliance, we continue to move forward with remedies. We have draft orders in the consent decree work group. We're meeting tomorrow, and hopefully, we'll be able to finalize our comments and try to move those orders forward. Search warrants is taking a little bit more time, it's a lot more complex. We have had experience where when we didn't think it through and put all the requirements in for documentation, that results in compliance issues after the fact and additional training. So we're trying to make sure that we're very careful with the search warrant procedures and get it right out of the gate. For pet and traffic stops, as you know, we have extended the contract with Scantron to continue scanning services. We are in the process of revising the form, it was approved by council. It will take approximately two months to print. We anticipate initiating use of the revised form on July 1st, so it will be at a quarter, and that will maximize the use of the data. Since we're having changes in data, we want to try to make that as least disruptive as possible for statistical analysis reasons. In this report, you will note, we have reported a number of times that we have a backlog associated with the U.S. data scanning contract. We had approximately 200,000 forms. We looked at the various options of what to do with those forms. It is the recommendation that those forms be maintained and archived, but we not spend any additional resources in trying to scan those forms into the system. We're in process of changing the forms. That data was the data we collected at the beginning of the program and has substantial error rates, in addition to the substantial amount of work it would take to identify those 200,000 forms, isolate them, and then the additional cost of scanning them at forty-two cents a form. Therefore, we are recommending that those be archived at this point. The U.S. Department of Justice and the independent monitor have reviewed that recommendation and have no objections to that process at this time. We continue to move forward with Teams Two. We are in the process of-
On the, this Vic, what is it, Vic what now?
Victech.
Victech. We have a list of questions-
Mr. Holden?
That, I just wanted to dwell on that-
I need you to press your button, just for the cue.
Yeah, okay. List of, a number of responses that the police put in, either name, the address, where you stopped them, so on, about seventeen different questions that the police have required to answer. As, with this equipment, is it incorporated in this equipment where those responses to the questions are automated?
That is, item number twenty-eight is the contract for Victech.
It's part of this report.
The handheld device will incorporate, will incorporate all of the questions of the paper form, and the paper form will no longer be used except in those instances where there is, the officers don't take that type of information frequently enough to warrant the cost of a Palm Pilot. But patrol officers, traffic officers, will have those devices for input of the pet and traffic stop data. That will decrease our scanning cost, will be real-time data, it has several advantages. The retaliation policy, we are required to review that annually at the commission level. The police commission is in the process of reviewing the information. It is anticipated it will be on their agenda within the next few weeks. Teams Two is moving forward. We are interviewing contractors who submitted proposals and anticipate having a recommendation within the, in May sometime, to bring back for council consideration. Aprus iCars, which is the automated record system, continues to have difficulties. The council awarded a $2.4 million contract. We were ready to transfer over to that system and identified corrupted data. We are in the process of trying to remedy the corrupted data so that we can initiate system operations. That is in process. As reported to you, when we asked for the freeze exemptions, we have a significant backlog in putting information into that system. Once that is fully operational, we anticipate coming back to city council and asking for some funding for overtime to be able to try to remedy and address that backlog in a timely fashion. Finally, the RAND report, which is a training audit report, has been released in draft. City comments are due April 30th, we are in the process of reviewing that. The U.S. Department of Justice and the independent monitor have indicated some preliminary concerns. We will be discussing that with them to try to incorporate their concerns into the city's comments back to RAND. With that, I close my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Holden?
A number of questions. One is that the RFP that was due April the 7th, did you address that in this report as relates to the independent, the DOJ, it says here, the data analysis was provided to the DOJ, DOJ independent monitor, and that the PPL reviewed it, and that the RFP was to incorporate the comments and so on, and the, was, it was go out, comments would be made, that you got a $1.9 million available, consent decree implementation, so what, could you address that issue, number one? And number two, you have one on mental illness-related policy and procedure review, I don't think you addressed that, and we'd like for you to address that as well, along with the retaliation policy as well. Would you cover those? I think they were omitted in your report.
The retaliation policy, as I indicated, will be submitted, the review is required on an annual basis. It's anticipated to be submitted to the commission within the next two weeks. The police department and commission staff and the inspector general are working on that report currently. For the data analysis RFP, the report indicates that April 7th was our goal, but we thought that that would be difficult to meet when we wrote this report, and indeed, that turned out to be the case. The LAPD has completed the revisions. It will be in the work group tomorrow afternoon, the city consent decree work group. We will have a final review, and then we will have to work with the city attorney to ensure we've met all the legal standards. So we anticipate that going out shortly, it's in final review process. For the mental illness report, under consent decree paragraphs 112, 111 and 112, LAPD is required to undertake an analysis on a review of the existing policies and procedures and training within LAPD regarding persons and contacts with persons who may be potentially mentally ill, and also looking at other law enforcement jurisdictions for best management practices. They completed that review and forwarded several different reports to the police commission for consideration. The police commission acted on those recommendations. The CLA's office prepared a report for Public Safety Committee review. They adopted the recommendations in that report. That report is anticipated to come to council next week. The report, yes, it should be in council next week. The report comments on a number of the recommendations and recommends some enhancements. There are two large issues within LAPD's recommendations. One is for a critical incident response team, and the other is to expand the SMART and MEU program with additional staffing. It was the CLA's recommendations that we wait till we see the budget to consider additional staffing for SMART, and our recommendations, we made no recommendations on CIT. However, we have raised significant issues for LAPD to review as they review the pilot program that they are currently undertaking, to address those concerns and issues prior to making a recommendation on implementation of that program citywide.
The question is, reporting of complaints, I understand that's down. The question is, why? And tell us what you plan, what's planned to be, what you plan to do about that. Mr. President.
The department has noticed a 37% decrease in complaints. The department has conducted extensive auditing, both with the taking of complaints and service to foreign people who do not speak English. We have found that there are some issues that were raised relating to the fact there's some policy violations relating to the taking of complaints in that the policy is an officer is supposed to take complaints whenever it's, they're approached and call their supervisor to come and take the complaint. Some officers have been referring the individuals to the police station with directions and others, but we feel that's not inappropriate. There's been some issues where the officers have not provided the necessary forms or have not gone as far as they should have in taking of complaints. This is, the vast majority of complaints were accepted without issue, but there are some problems that are raised. The chief has discussed this on three separate staff meetings, it's been discussed by captains at roll calls, and the chief issued a Code 20, which is the videotape that showed our roll calls relating to the issue of how to take complaints and what materials are necessary, and we will continue to do the auditing.
You know, that's hogwash.
Okay.
You know, and that's so shameful about what's going on here today. We had a policy when the consent decree was adopted, and then not too long ago, you asked this council to change that policy, to say that complaints that, in your judgment, was not that significant, so therefore, they don't have to be taken and administratively kind of ruled out. I remember something like that coming through this council.
That's not, that's not true. Every, every-
We will get a copy of the motion, and I'm going to, next time you come before me, I'm going to put it in your hand. I'll get a copy of the tape, which I save most of it, put that in your hand, show you exactly what was said here by Joe Gunn, okay? And what, and the misrepresenting the facts to the council, that's why the complaints have gone down. Now, I just want to say this, if I got to give out one compliment, that's to Ms. Garrett. I don't think either one of you know as much as she does about this whole operation. And you can prove it to me, that'll be fine. This woman, fine woman, has learned the whole script from A to Z. I mean, you can't ask her a question that she can't respond to, and she doesn't try to confuse the issue. If she doesn't know, I'll get back to you on that, that date hasn't come, it's come, we knew we were going to slip, but we'll deal with it next week. But you guys don't do that. You come in and you say, "Well, we're all stupid," and they'll say what you want to say. No, you don't say we're stupid, but as you present your statement, it's almost like you don't think we're listening to you, and if we're listening to you, we don't remember. But we do remember, and most of all, the public does. Most of all, the people who are personally affected by this change of policy remembers it the most. it the most because they lose hope and they have no places to go. If they can't go to the police department, make a complaint, come to our office, where can they go? And I think you have to be concerned about that, as I am, and as the public is.
It's the department policy, and has always been the department's policy, to accept every complaint. The change in the complaint policy was not in what you accepted, but how they were adjudicated, whether or not we brought in a mediation or arbitration process, or whether or not we continued with the full investigations pursuant to the previous policy. What I was addressing was the fact that some officers, rather than call their supervisor immediately in the field, were referring people back to the station. For whatever reason, that has been addressed, the chief has addressed it. It is still the policy of this department, and particularly this police chief, that every complaint will be received, addressed, and the person will receive a full explanation of what happened.
Thank you. Councilmember Parks?
I got 25 seconds left. I just want to say, Ms. Garrett, if I were the chief of police today, I'd bring you over and make you my sidekick, as you know, you, you can protect him. These, these others, I don't know about these others.
Mr. Parks?
You were the chief of police today, the city would be in big trouble, Nate.
Ms. Garrett, I just wanted, what is the RAND report that you refer to?
RAND was a, we were required under paragraph 133 to undertake an audit of the LAPD training programs with specific focus on use of force and community policing. We were required to hire an independent outside contractor, and that contractor was RAND. And RAND has completed that review and provided us a final report with several recommendations.
The other thing, the report you're referencing there, is that the most recent monitor's report?
That is the CLA's report. The next monitor's report is due out next month.
Okay. One of the things, as you mentioned, we talked about it last time, about the complaint procedures, and the point I was trying to make is no matter what's written on the document, that if we do not emphasize it, that we'll have the anomaly that you're talking about. And it's unfortunate that we had to reach that level of anomaly before we found it. The other issue I want to bring up, not that I'm projecting or believing that I can tell the future, but as we look at the reorganization of the LAPD, the thing I'm most concerned about when we talk about revamping gang units, if we rename them and move them and take them out of the requirements that are the consent decree about how gang officers are selected, we will be creating a similar problem in the department that will occur somewhere else. And just as we found the anomaly on the complaint system, because people interpret not only what the written word is, but they also interpret what is said about complaints that are less important and that we describe as being immaterial, officers implement that mentally and physically out in the field. And so I think the messages have to be not only with the written word, but how we monitor them and what we say. But I think we have to be very concerned of most recent decentralization of narcotics. Again, if we find that we put eighteen different units out there, then all of those requirements about informants, search warrants, will all dissipate because you do not have that central control. So I think we have to make sure we're not chasing a moving target or putting our arms around smoke, because as we, as the department reorganizes, the fact that they changed the name doesn't change the responsibility, and particularly when we deal with certain sensitive issues like intelligence files, selection of gang members, gang officers, and dealing with the whole issue of narcotics. And so I think we have to rely on you to, as you look for the council, at those issues, because I think we were assured last time that the rules hadn't changed and complaints were being taken, and almost immediately found out that that was just the opposite. So I'd, again, give you that charge to look at those issues.
Ms. Zakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur, and I think that councilmembers Holden and Parks have focused on, in the CLA report and our status report update on the consent decree, the most important and critical element, and that is, councilmember Parks referred to it as an anomaly, and I think it was, it was that and more. You can't have that significant a drop in complaints and say that it's because we're doing good and we don't have complaints. That significant a complaint was an alarm going off. It was an alarm that the CLA was aware of, the department was aware of it, and the only question, and I appreciate that the department has said that there has now been roll call, new training and new focus on it. The question I have is, how thorough is our accounting for it now and our auditing for it now, particularly in the sting audits, to make sure that we're seeing a dramatic readjustment in the right direction on this, and that those numbers, I mean, we'd all like to see fewer complaints because there were fewer legitimate complaints, but I also want to see that every complaint, which is a legitimate complaint, is being processed the way it should. So how is the department handling its assurance that the video and the discussion with the chief and the captains is hitting at the level it ought to hit, at every officer in the force to know that complaints are still critical?
We have ongoing sting audits relating to the filing of complaints.
And when will those sting audits yield some numbers to show that your impact is being felt?
Hopefully immediately.
Hopefully immediately, okay.
If not, the chief has basically told the captains that reassignments will follow.
All right, well, in as much as we get the status report every other weekend in public safety, I want that to be highlighted by both Ms. Garrett and the department, to get some accountability that we are seeing, an immediate impact of that readjustment, that focus, and that those sting audits that are ongoing. And I also share with Mr. Holden his admiration for Ms. Garrett and her capabilities here to know at her fingertips all of this massive, massive amount of data, and keep us and the department, and sometimes Department of Justice and Independent Monitor in line as well. So I thank you for that work.
Let me just say, the department also shares your view of Ms. Garrett, but if we keep saying it, she'll be impossible to deal with afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 28 called special by councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, before we take up item 28, Mr. Labange has a brief and spontaneous presentation.
If you could come here, Mr. Deaton, please, if you would come here, please. And members of council, as all of us are privileged to have constituents in our district, I'm very privileged to have many great city employees, and one of the greatest lives in the Los Feliz district, and Avak Catalin, come out here, Avak, right now. He's getting recognized, Ron. Hi, this is his 25-year pin. How many years of service?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years, okay. And Ron, we're presenting him this pin here. Often on weekends when I come down from Griffith Park, I see Avak walking hillhurst by the market and making sure things are right in the fourth district and all the city of Los Angeles. So if I could open this right here, we proudly present the 25-year pin to one of the greatest guys in staff. This is the greatest guy, and I say that in front of Ron Deaton, this is the greatest guy in city hall, Avak Catalin.
Thank you.
Ms. Galanter?
Hello? Yeah. I just want to point out that, to those of you who may not have experienced this yet, that one of Avak's many talents, and one of the most useful, is that when you get an idea for a new motion, he can tell you when we already did it.
Yeah.
And it's not a bad idea to check.
He's a walking one-man CFI. Councilmember Reyes?
It's back in 82, 83, I was an intern at the CLA's office, and the person who was guiding me around and telling me, "No, you don't talk to that person." "Yes, you go on that committee." "And no, you don't read that report." That was Avak. So thanks, Avak, for all your tutelage.
He does that to me, too.
Councilmember Gruehl?
Well, I, and I was an intern in 1981. He did the same thing to me as I was going back to Washington, D.C. He has never been shy about telling us how to act and what we need to do, and we appreciate that, Avak. And it doesn't seem possible that that was 22 years ago that we met, as I was on my way during college, back to Washington, D.C. But we do appreciate you, and we appreciate giving you a hard time, and so we look forward to many, many more years of you being here in city hall. Congratulations.
It's a major tribute to the resiliency of the city of Los Angeles that has been able to put up with Avak for these low 25 years.
Mr. Holden? Mr. Holden?
It's not Ron Deaton, Ms. Garrett, and we have got Avak, and they all meet, Ron Deaton looks like he's smart. Whenever a question, you ask Ron a question, he goes to Avak. You ask him another question, he goes to Avak. And Avak, until he gets the answer, and then he comes to you and he says, gives you the answer to the question, he says, "See how smart I am?" I just want you to know that there was a guy named Bill McCauley who worked here, and his sidekick was a Ron Deaton. And sixteen years ago, when I came here to work, there was, as McCauley says, "I don't have to know anything because Ron Deaton is on my staff." And Ron Deaton picked up the habit, saying, "I don't have to know anything because Avak is on my staff." And I must tell you that whenever there's a question that's not answered, Avak knows the answer, all you have to do is ask. With me and these volunteers, he says, "I know what you don't know, Nate," and he says, "So I'm gonna tell you in advance, here's what you don't know," and he answers to the question. Really a great guy, tremendous personality, a good person to work with. In fact, his mother lives in my district. I could always count on at least two votes, mine and hers. She says, "All right, my mother watches you on television," and she just, "Try and get a little more airtime," she said. He said, "I said, I do the best I can. I try to call two out of three special." In any case, Avak, congratulations. It's 25 years working here, as I know, it's an accomplishment. Sixteen years for me is tough, but it's working out for both of us. And Ron Deaton, no matter how I beat up on him for once in a while, he's a great boss, I'm sure. He's a great CLA. He does, I mean, this guy is the center post for the city of Los Angeles, and the public is, should be pleased, and taxpayers should be pleased to know that you both are here. I know I am.
Ms. Hahn?
Well, thank you very much. I just also wanted to add my congratulations to Avak, and certainly for those of us who are new around here, although we've now been here almost two years, but you really are the man to go to. You're the king of information, and one of the things I love about you is, besides, when you have an idea for a motion, besides you telling us whether or not it's already been done and when it's been done, you actually sometimes give us the kind of, not that any of us need encouragement to put forth a motion, but a couple times I've been a little unsure whether or not it was the right thing to do. You're right, you should do that motion. You're absolutely right. So that's been a bit of encouragement that I have appreciated, and every motion is, when you, when you take control of them, they're absolutely beautiful, and we just had the very first color photo on a motion that Tom Labange and Avak just created not too long ago, historic day in the city of Los Angeles.
Ms. Zakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I think it's appropriate, on the day that we had the cardinal here, that we do have to call Mr. Holden on perhaps a little fib. I can't honestly believe that there's any constituent out there who says that Mr. Holden should have more airtime. But having said that, I also want Avak to maybe share with all of us, as he goes around later, a historic photo himself, and that is his 25-years-ago city identification badge with photo. I've seen it, we were one of the two of them, I think we still have one from that era, but it's hard to identify. But Avak has been a treasure for all the time that he's been here, and a person that we are all reacting to today, brings a smile to our face because the quip, the comment, the honesty is always there, whether we want it or not.
Ms. Perry?
Avak, what can I say about you? You are honest, painfully so. And I have to say this, but there's some little-known facts about you, that you are an accomplished musician and an incredible guitarist. He proudly, he will show you very proudly his green card if you ask, and he often shares his feelings about being an immigrant to this country, but I have to say that you are a success story. As much as I hate to admit it, and I do, you are a success story, and I have great admiration for you, even though you, you make us work very hard for the information you do give with, give us, and congratulations, and say hello to your mother.
Mr. Britson?
Well, before I say anything about Avak, we really have to talk to your mother about Nate, you know? Avak, you know, everybody's talked about the CLA's office, but actually, Avak goes back to Ken Spiker. And he was, you were here a year before me, I guess, which was in seven, I came in '79, I guess you were here in '78. And so he's survived all of these people, and I don't know how he's gonna survive Ron Deaton, but it's gonna be tough. Ron, where are you? Oh, yeah, I wanted you to catch that, you know? Anyway-
Repeat it, repeat it for him, so-
No, it's all right, you know, it's over his head anyway. Avak, I just want to tell you how much I have appreciated the service you give in the city, our office. You're always there with, giving us helpful information. If we have to get something out, we go to Avak, he gets it out, he gets the resolution out. If it's a problem with it or something that's already been done, he'll tell us, as you heard. You better keep him around, because as some of us old guys leave this council, your institutional memory is gonna be depending on people like Avak. But Avak, you've been a great public servant, and you have my congratulations, and I wish you the best in the future, and stick around, because they're gonna need you, okay?
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Avak, you're a man of few words and mysterious ways. You have represented, I think, more council districts than anybody on this horseshoe, I can confirm, as a shadow council member, and certainly the 13th district thanks you for your time as caretaker of our neighborhoods. I think that you are also, and I'll close on this, the pride of little and big Armenia, and all of us in Council District 13 are pleased that you've gotten through as many years working for a man like Ron Deaton as you have.
Mr. Weiss?
You know, Avak, Mr. Garcetti is absolutely right. You've held, you've held his job, you've held my job representing the 5th district, and who thought that you'd have to put in 25 years of service to provoke this barrage of Deaton and Holden jokes this morning? But I want to thank you personally, on behalf of everything you've done for me and with me and with everybody on my staff, we're just, we're privileged to work with you, and we know we're gonna continue working with you in the years ahead. Congratulations, Avak, and thanks.
Other members? If not, then, no, no, before we open the roll, we're gonna hear from Avak in a second, but I just wanted to add my thanks to Avak. Twenty-five years and counting, because he's still going strong, as Mr. Garcetti said. I think Avak can probably run for mayor, because he's represented almost the entire city over that 25-year career. Also wanted to point out that I don't know if there's anything Avak doesn't do. As a new member almost four years ago, kind of saw Avak, kind of met Avak, and early on learned that he's the, one of the go-to guys to produce a motion. You have an idea, he'll put it out there for you and give you the history and why it didn't work the last go-around. But then I ended up in Washington, D.C. on a trip to lobby the congressional delegation, and there's Avak, showing you how it's done and who are the important people to talk to. And then I'm back here in Los Angeles, and it's important once in a while to organize receptions and events to commemorate individuals or significant events in the city's history, and there's Avak, making sure that it's all put together well and appropriately and respectfully for all the parties involved. So on and on and on, Avak just has maybe 25 years of experience, but a multitude of abilities and advice for current and future members of the council. So we're gonna continue to rely upon that and lean on him. Thank you, Avak. Mr. Deaton?
Well, I just got a phone call from Supervisor Yaroslavsky.
He's still watching Channel 35.
He has nothing better to do.
Tell him to go balance the budget.
Obviously.
Now that their budget is balanced, right?
Notwithstanding that, he wanted to let you know that he couldn't believe you were making these comments about Avak. He's left, and he doesn't see any reason to, he sends his best wishes.
Did he really call?
Well, thank you very much. You've all discovered my one weakness. You can kill me with kindness, and I'm dying up here, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, for that presentation. Members, unless there's an objection, what I'd like to do is take a pause in the agenda and take up a special one next. We have... Right, this shouldn't take very long. Mr. Wiggs is here from the Department of Water and Power. He does have to run, and we have an item of urgent nature that we can dispense with in short order. Mr. Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, are we prepared with special one?
Special one has been introduced by Councilmember Padilla. City Attorney will speak to need to make the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll read into the record the findings for council to consider. Since the posting of today's agenda, a Senate version of the energy bill that weakens the city's control over its Department of Water and Power has been moving rapidly through the legislative process, and the city's position must be expressed before the legislation is acted upon. Pursuant to the government code, council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, council may then consider the substantive motion.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Colleagues, anybody wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you please, open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 aye.
Okay, the item is before us. Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. This is actually an effort to expedite a motion that Mr. Padilla and I introduced last week, I believe, in which we had referred to committee, hoping that we would have time to deal with it there. But as you heard from the City Attorney, events are outpacing us. Basically, the problem the city faces, and the reason we need to get this into our legislative program, is that the federal government is looking to move on our transmission lines. We currently control our own transmission lines, and that has, in addition to the fact that we control our own generation, that is what kept the lights on in California. And it's really important for the city's future ability to ensure that we have reliable power here at home, that we'd be able to maintain control of our transmission lines. And the problem is, if they start pulling the transmission controls away from us, that's likely to be a precursor of forcing us into the overall pattern with the investor-owned utilities, and we all know what that produced for the rest of the state. So I urge your support for this motion, which would put the city on record objecting to the federal efforts to undermine our control of our own transmission lines, which we paid for and which we operate.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just quickly, two points. One, procedurally, this was a motion introduced by Councilmember Galanter, and I gladly seconded. In the Rules of Elections and International Governmental Relations Committee considered that matter this morning, there was a unanimous vote from committee to support the motion and approve the motion. Since then, it had been brought to our attention that this matter is urgent in nature because of the pace of discussions and actions in Washington, which is why we're here on a Rule 23. So the findings have been made, and we would ask for your support of the motion itself. Bottom line is, the reason that the Department of Water and Power and the city of Los Angeles are able to provide very affordable, very reliable energy to the residents of the city of Los Angeles is because of the investment in our infrastructure, the quality infrastructure, the low-quality, excuse me, high-quality, low-cost infrastructure that we want to maintain control of. Because of the energy crisis in the state of California and the western United States over the last several years, there are these cockamamie ideas that we should take the assets away from the Department of Water and Power for regional gain and regional, national control. That is not in our interest, and we need to continue to be vigilant. We need to continue to be protective and defensive of our assets, of our investments. That's in the best interests of the business and the residents of the city of Los Angeles. So we do ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, we oppose deregulation by opposing AB 1890, which we all know, as a result, it was a disaster. And there are some people around this horseshoe who wanted to support AB 90. The administration at the time was supportive of AB 90. They thought we'd all come together. Had we done that, only God knows what the rate payers of the city of Los Angeles would be asked to pay out of their pocket, how much money extra we would have had to pay. This proposed legislation now in Washington goes far beyond deregulations or AB 1890. What the federal government is proposing to do, and is unconstitutional, is to federalize the utilities in the city of Los Angeles. And it cannot be done, as it were, in the Second World War, unless this nation is threatened, and there is in fact a declaration of war, and the federal government needs this, these transmission lines for the entrance of our country in the time of war. And that's the only time they can do that. Yes, they can do what they want to do legislatively, perhaps, but there is no declaration of war. We have independence here in the city of Los Angeles. And we are going to stand on those grounds today, as we did during the Second World War. You cannot federalize DWP and the use of its transmission lines, or even just producing its energy. It's known to be unconstitutional, and those rights have not been waived by us, nor will they be. And I think that not just this motion should be sent out, but pointing at the fact that it's unconstitutional to federalize DWP because in effect, that's what they would be doing or attempting to do. And so, Mr. President, members, I ask that we strongly support this resolution. I think the City Attorney should be requested to draft a letter, a document. You shake your head, Deaton, I'll send the document myself to the President, telling him he cannot federalize. Because in effect, that's what this is, and that's what they're attempting to do. You've got to hit it where it hurts, that the federal government is going to come in and take over DWP, and that's what they're talking about. And they cannot do that. That would be shameful, they know that, and it's unconstitutional. Shake your head if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Seeing no other colleagues wishing to be heard, we can open the rolls on the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 aye.
That item is approved. Fourth with, please. And if we can go back to the regular agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Item 28 is still before you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Called special by Mr. Holden.
Mr. Holden.
I saw a Palm Pilot around here, and we have to have a respite on that. And the recommendations are rather not too clear. Who's going to come to the table and tell us all about this ViTech device that they're going to spend $5 million for that they can buy off the shelf?
Barb Garrett with the CLA's office. The recommendation before you is to authorize the CLA and the mayor's office, in coordination with LAPD, to negotiate a fixed-price contract for the purchase of Palm Pilots, for the collection of pedestrian and motor vehicle stop data, and fulfilled interview cards, and all of the associated software and hardware and software development activities necessary to make that a successful program. There is a Palm Pilot available. It includes, at this point, a MAG Stripe reader so they can run the license, the driver's license, through and automatically populate some of the fields to be able to expedite the data collection process. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
Your recommendations are incomplete. They're talking about design, development, they're talking about implementation of the portable officer's data device system. You're going to design it, and you're also going to come up with a software. There's no RFP, sole source. There's no RFP here, doesn't say anything about RFP.
We went out for an RFP. We considered several proposals, and we came up with this handheld device. It's actually not a Palm Pilot, but it's not, oftentimes, we use, like when we Xerox things, we're really talking about copying them because of the manufacturer. But this is not a Palm Pilot, this is a...
Pocket PC, I believe, is the technology.
It's a pocket PC. That, in any event, we considered the proposals. Proposals were, most of the vendors bid a particular manufacturer, so the equipment was pretty common. The issue was how they were going to handle the software, the accumulation of the information within the pocket PC, and then the pocket PC to the data processing system that would accumulate all the data for all the officers. And it's that, that aspect was different for different firms. And we went into, we interviewed four or five firms, and then re-interviewed more, and came to a conclusion that this was the best.
This device you're talking about?
The device plus the...
Associated hardware, software?
Associated software, which is the ViTech piece, that's right.
All right, fine. Now, you're saying for design. Sorry to design.
The hardware is designed.
I'm holding a system in my hand.
The hard, no, you're not.
It's designed.
The hardware is, Mr. Holden.
Hardware is designed.
Not the software. The software comes up on the screen of what is going to come up on the screen.
It says here, $5 million for professional services for the design, development, and implementation of a portable officer's data device system.
For, for the data entry.
Device system.
Right.
This is, this is the hardware of the system.
And as I said, all the vendors, not all the vendors, but most of the vendors, most of the vendors bid that device. And then in addition to that, they bid on how to do the software to capture the information in the field, accumulate that information, and then make reports so we could use it for the consent decree.
If I were to ask you for a detailed report to the RFP, would you tell me how much this device costs and how much the software is going to cost? Would you be able to tell me the difference between the two?
Yes.
What is it then?
I said, if you ask me for a detailed report...
I'm asking the question, what is it?
One, I'm going to, as you stated before, I'm going to ask somebody who actually knows. We'll get you the information, Mr. Holden.
Yeah, Mike Mound, I've been a consultant to the CLA's office. I don't have the exact figures because I don't have it with me, but the hardware includes that device. That's actually two devices because it's got a MAG Stripe reader on the bottom, right?
Receptive.
They are separably purchasable, if you wish. It also includes a cradle to charge them in every car, every police car. And it includes the backend computers. So hardware is more than just that device. But there are approximately 1,200 of those devices. That's the charging unit. There are 1,200 of the portable digital assistant devices.
I know, I know. Go ahead.
And each of those are approximately $840.
Each of these costs how much?
About $840.
$840 for 1,200.
For 1,200 of them, yes. So that's about a million dollars.
The associated software is additional cost?
The software is additional cost, the cradles are additional cost and so forth. So there's a number of pieces to this. We also have, in this particular case, Councilman, each, each of the, thank you. Each of the stations is going to be equipped with what's called a hotspot, which is a transmitter that will allow officers to upload and download data without having to go into a kit room, which is, and the police department is a pretty crowded location. And so there's also included in this contract the cost of figuring out where we have to put those hotspots, physically putting them in, and then that's, that device already has the ability to communicate with those via radio wave.
Do you anticipate any additional charges, like training and so on?
Training is in there as well, and documentation.
This is the total cost, $5 million?
$5 million is the total cost, including contingency, sir.
Including, that's all, total cost?
Yes, sir.
So therefore, another month from now, two months from now, six months from now, you won't be coming back saying, "But we forgot this part," and it's going to be additional cost?
No, we will not.
Okay. And the reason why I raised the question, because in the police budget, you're over $30, $40 million shortfall right now as we speak. Another $5 million added to that, last week we voted for another few million dollars in taking police officers off the street, it's just getting bigger and bigger, that deficit, and no money is coming in with the state shortfall being what it is, the federal shortfall being what it is. It's something that these council members are going to have to contend with. That's why I'm highlighting the issue.
As you know, sir, there was many budget for this. This sum will be substantially less than what was budgeted for it, so. In the overall city finances, it should be a help, not a hindrance.
I hope so.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Councilmember Miskowski.
Just to clarify for Mr. Holden, this was initially an RFP out in 2001, and then we went out again in 2002 for an RFP. There were, I think, 11 qualified bidders. The city's team, who reviewed this, consisted, the evaluation and review of the responsive proposals, was immediately initiated by the City Reviews Committee, comprised of the CLA, the CAO, the LAPD's Chief Information Officer, the Assistant General Manager of Information Technology, and the Commanding Officer of Management Services Division of LAPD. The evaluation dealt with a whole scope of issues here, which are itemized in the report. And after the subsequent interviews and review of everything, it was the unanimous City Review Committee's determination that this ViTech Public Safety Solutions was the most qualified proposal to provide this information on time. And I think the last answer to the question is that this was budgeted for last year, and so there is money in the account for this that is being used so we don't have to tap into the reserve fund. And although you're right about the overall budget of the police department, this isn't something added, this is something that was counted as to be spent and will be worthwhile. This is one of the things, members, that we actually did right. Before we went out with this, we went out with a number of different devices, let police officers have a feel for it, talk about what worked best, passed the drop test in terms of being used by one officer, you know, communicated back at the station in terms of the transfer of data, sent back out with another group of officers. It's going to get heavy, heavy, heavy use and abuse. It also has the capability that, when we went out the first time, the officer said would be the best thing available is if it had this swipe of the ID card, swipe of the driver's license capability, and this one has it. Might there be more costs in the future? Not for the framework of what we want. If we wanted to do more, if the officers wanted to do more, we know technology is ever-increasing, and having that capability in the field with some kind of PC to access records in Sacramento on arrest records, or this, that, and the other, that would be terrific. It's not part of this program now. It has the capability of expanding in the future if we have the money and other programs and the coordination of all the other agencies to do it. But that's what we were looking for, the best device to do what we agreed it ought to do and more, and then have the capability to do more. And that is being brought in by a process that took a little longer than I think we wanted, but the result is good, and what we're getting is something that is going to be very, very, very useful for our officers on the field in saving time, in getting information, and in complying with the consent decree.
Thank you, Ms. Miskowski. Councilmember Gruehl. Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. A quick question relative to this use. We've had some trouble with Department of Transportation, for example, going to an area and they keep giving tickets to a particular vehicle that may have been stolen. And one of the things that we've talked about with LAPD and DOT has been the ability to have a handheld that would let them know, or some way to let them know if that particular automobile had been stolen, rather than six or seven tickets that go on that particular car. Is that compatible with this? Is this different? Do you know?
No.
I see someone back there shaking his head, no, that it's not, it's not compatible. Okay. Is it different? It's a different kind of...
Yes, it's a totally different system. This device is strictly for the capture of the motor vehicle and pedestrian stop data and the FI or field interview data, and then with an enhancement that we can write citations. The officers have the capabilities in their cars, the ones that are, that have vehicles, of the MDTs, which they can run the license plate numbers and tell whether they're stolen from that. And that's, all the police vehicles have that capability.
What we had been told was DOT was going to have, again, because they necessarily wouldn't be with... wouldn't be with LAPD when they're at these vehicles, to be able to determine whether they were stolen, not and had purchased 25 of some type of handheld computer. So maybe, just, you're not familiar with that?
There's no connection between the two.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grule. Mr. Holden, for a second time.
In the report, I see that the request for a proposal was submitted initially 2 October 2030, 2001, and the, the process was terminated in December 2001. Tell us why.
There's some difficulties in the, the minority...
Turn his mic up so we can hear him. Go ahead.
There were some difficulties in the, in the way that the information had been requested from the city, by the city, on, on minority women business enterprise. And we did not feel we had been fair in the way we had asked for the information, so we, we chose to resubmit.
And then again, in May 2002, what happened for you, what'd you learn that you didn't know in November or whenever to reach the...
We did some revision on the, on the requirements, but primarily, we, we put the request for proposal was better structured on the request for information on minority women business.
Okay. Now, here's the problem. The problem is that just last year, we had enough evidence, enough information to provide a report to the council and try to satisfy the monitor, independent monitor in the court, that we were in compliance with the consent decree because we had a data collecting device out there, where you have 17 different questions. Is that not correct?
We have a form that we...
That's right. And you came up with a number, so many in this division, so many in that division, so many of this ethnic group, as we tried to establish whether or not we had racial profiling here in the city of Los Angeles. That's what it was all about, correct?
We are required under the consent decree to collect that information.
And even without this device, we came up with sufficient data to alarm us all, which suggested that there very well could be racial profiling. Now, my question to you is that, how would this new technology change that effort? And you also submitted an RFP for someone to analyze that data to tell you whether or not, give you a better understanding, which I could read on its surface by inspection, what the results are. So you're spending more money there. Now, my question to you is, how would this interfere with that process, if at all, with this new device coming in? You might say, "Let's start all over again?"
No.
And whether or not the monitor, independent monitor would accept it?
We believe, we believe that the, by collecting the information this way, it will be easier and quicker for the officer because of the ability of the self-checks within the handheld, that the data will be better. And in addition to being able to perform that part of the consent decree in a more efficient and effective manner, it allows us to also do field interviews, and also allows, with the addition of the driver's license swipe piece, to be able to do traffic citations as well. Fundamentally, I think there, most of us believe that this will be a fundamental difference in the way we do business in the future. This is the first step towards that. There is no way, otherwise, you're asking the officer to carry forms for FI, for field interviews, the traffic ticket. All these things can eventually be done on this device. Also, in the ability, and I think in a short while, to be able to communicate through probably the MDT or something on the, on the, on the automobile to downtown and be able to be a handheld communications device as well, that's a little further in the future. But in the future, this is going to be the way we collect a lot of information, not just this, in, in the, in the police department. I think it is a major step forward, and is one that will, I think, change the way we do business in many ways.
So you're suggesting then that this is a time-saving device?
Yes.
In the field operations?
And more, and more accurate.
And I'll accept that. Then it's, the, the success of the program is directly dependent upon the person who's operating the device. And that we're, we're talking about is accountability, whether or not the individual who's operating the device, who happens to be the police officer, will incorporate all the data as required by the consent decree or by the rules and regulations of the department, and then for us to be in compliance.
Right. I believe that the officer, if we continue the way we are, they're going to have to have a backpack for the forms that they're going to have to carry in, in order to fill out. This allows them to do what they need to do in a timely fashion, and the more easel, the easier we make it for the officer to collect the information, the better the information is going to be, and the better the officer is going to be able to do their respective jobs.
So without you having said this, you think it's more cost-effective?
I absolutely.
Maybe you convinced me.
I will say, I believe it's more cost-effective.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holden. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we have the item before us. Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Colleagues, I would underscore that we are down to 10 members and a bare quorum. If you'll please let me or whoever's in the chair know if you do need to leave, so we can be sure to keep track of the next, I believe it's five or six items we have. Mr. Clerk, if we can go to the next item, please.
Item number 30 has been called special by Councilmember Perry. This item has been submitted without recommendation, and a motion is required.
Councilmember Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make a motion on the floor to approve the recommendations inasmuch as the staff report was submitted without one. The person who originated this application had some disagreement with the staff recommendations originally, but has since decided that he wants this to move forward, so it's been resolved and should move forward.
Great. That'll be moved by Ms. Perry. I will second that. Anybody wishing to be heard, besides Ms. Perry on this? Seeing none, if we can, please open the roll on the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number three, inasmuch as there are cards. And there are also two reports on the file, and motion is required.
Is item number 33?
33.
Okay. We have one public speaker card, Mr. Jim McQuiston, would like to come forward on item 33, so we can hear your public testimony.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. The planning department has taken up the challenge and has gone ahead with notification to neighborhood councils. We're not quite pleased with the way it's working out, but we're satisfied with this motion, and we think that it takes time to get all the wrinkles ironed out, and we're willing to work with the planning department on that. And so we urge you to go ahead with this. I do want to say, however, that this actually is the domain of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. The actual people who are supposed to be doing this are the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. And so from a technical standpoint, it's not really required for the city council to act on this particular point.
Thank you very much, Mr. McQuiston. This time, I'd like to recognize the chair of the Neighborhoods and Education Committee, Councilwoman Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I introduce this motion to, again, try to continually move forward this idea that city hall, particularly our city departments, are participating in the early notification system with our neighborhood councils. And I felt like the one department that probably most impacts our neighborhoods certainly is the planning department. So it was my desire to see the planning department begin notifying neighborhood councils whenever there was a ZA hearing or an area planning commission meeting that certainly had cases which impacted their neighborhoods. So I must say, the planning department is moving forward. They're already working hard to notify neighborhood councils on specific cases that come up before the ZA or the APC, but I just wanted to formalize this, and I appreciate, Jim McQuiston, you, and really all the neighborhood councils, basically saying, "We know this is new, new times in Los Angeles. We know it's going to take a while to get all our departments really working in conjunction with our neighborhood councils." It's not perfect yet, but so far, all of our departments are really working hard to make sure that neighborhoods are notified and given the opportunity to weigh in on the issues that will ultimately most impact their quality of life in their communities. So what I'd like to move today is the Education and Neighborhood Committee report, so I would like to move that forward.
Okay. And that will be before us, colleagues, moved by Councilwoman Hahn, seconded by Councilwoman Grule. Any other colleagues wishing to be heard? Seeing none, if we can open the roll on the motion before us on the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 38, inasmuch as there are cards, and the city attorney has distributed a new ordinance on this item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. We have one public speaker card, again, Mr. McQuiston, Jim McQuiston from East Hollywood Community Association. The microphone is yours.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I want to emphasize that this is the idea of our whole community, and not just my own idea on this, although I am the planning representative, I'm representing the 70,000 stakeholders here. The problem that we put in is on the record. We had three technical problems with this particular ordinance. The city attorney has worked on this ordinance again, and some of our problems have been erased. However, we do have three places where we believe that the city attorney should put on the legislative history the reason why these particular things are put in, because the ordinance is ambiguous. And I do want to say that, especially in Council District 5, I know Councilmember Weiss, who is not here, has been pushing very hard to keep the billboards out of the area. And there is one billboard company which is resisting. This particular ordinance will authorize that billboard company to go to a, a place, let's say, a corner lot or a building which is vacant, and say, "Let's change your toilets." And we'll have to take out a building permit on that, then we will put up a barrier in front of your place, and put up a billboard on that barrier, a regular billboard. Now, this is something which I think has not been addressed, hasn't, accordingly, hasn't even been thought about. This is a wide-open billboard ordinance for clear channel, and we think that this one part of the ordinance can be fixed quite easily by putting in a percentage-wise, instead of allowing them the eight square foot per foot of footage. That would allow a corner lot to put up what Councilmember Weiss hates, these giant canvas billboards on a billboard that is put on a construction site. So we think that some accommodation should be made there. We suggested in our plan to cut the square footage down to 50% of the area, and that would certainly keep these kinds of things from being even contemplated. And we think that that is entirely appropriate. The reason for this ordinance, in our particular area, we can accommodate the particular reason for this ordinance, and everyone can be happy if we just cut this down to the 50%. And we did have that in our point, too. There also is a problem about cleanup, because it looks like the billboard company only has to clean up public property. And we did want to have the city attorney assure us that the billboard company also has to go to the private property. We don't want to put an extra cost on the city to actually have to go around and monitor all these sites. We want the billboard company actually to do the monitoring itself and to take appropriate action. And if they don't take appropriate action and their permit is revoked, we want to make sure that there's something in this ordinance that says they have to do the cleanup on account of this permit, rather than going through an extensive and a costly city process to do what they promised to do in the first place. So these particular things, we think, could be fixed quite easily in the ordinance. We know that's not the required number here today to pass the ordinance on one reading, so we think that perhaps it could be cleaned up before it came back on the second reading.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiston. Colleagues, anybody wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That will be held over for a second reading. If we can take the next item, please. We actually, if we can hold on to the desk, 48, and take the next item after that.
That leaves you with the closed session items, Mr. President.
Okay, colleagues, right now, it's time for us to go into executive session. If you can please ask for the room to be cleared so that we can begin that executive session. Oh, hold on.
48.
Okay. Okay. If we have the, as soon as the room is cleared, if we take up item 48 for the record, Mr. Parks, Councilmember Parks, will be recusing himself for this item. Mr. Parks, you can, you may be recused, and we'll take that item for a vote as soon as we have the doors closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Parks.
I just want to let you know that I have to recuse myself on item 48.
Great.
That may be one of the...
And I've just recognized that your recusal will be there and will be on the record. Thank you very much, Councilmember Parks. Mr. Burton has returned.
Oh.
And we are going to take up that first item. We'll now go into executive session. It's the open session of Los Angeles City Council. Colleagues, we have two items that we've just taken up in executive session. Mr. Clerk, if you can please let us know what those two are.
Mr. President, on item 68A, there is a recommendation to approve a settlement in the amount of $261,000 in the case of DNM Construction, Inc. versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay. No, no, we're back in open session, thank you. If we can please open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That is approved. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
On item 68B, there's a recommendation to approve a settlement in the amount of $65,000 in the case of the City of Los Angeles versus the Verdugo Hills Golf Course.
Okay, colleagues, that is before us. Nobody wishing to be heard? Please open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Does that complete the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Except for public comments.
Okay. Now, it's time for public comment on matters not posted on our agenda. We have one public speaker card, Leonard Rose, Jr. Would like to come forward. The microphone is yours.
My name is Leonard Rose. I got exciting news, what I heard on Channel 7 this last Monday, and they're going to show a good program, what so you do, and every Monday night, 8:00 PM, they're going to talk about the, you can take control of the decision, relate this and other true life experience inherent expert tip that you could change the outcome of crisis solution. Well, women, real crime, real solution. They're going to show it every Monday night, different stories. They're going to show that every Monday night, different stories, about the dog biting, you know, and how to protect your family, how you protect your community, and like that deer program, see if you like, they teach our children, say no to drugs, say no to stranger, and say no to other things to do. And it goes, so good story, and I just want to share this to you guys there. And then this Sunday, go Easter Sunday, all your local churches, and they're going to have a celebration, Jesus Reclamation, and thank the pastor and Father Praise, and you're going to have something special for this Sunday for every church community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rose. That completes our public comment, colleagues. Mr. Clerk, do we have any housekeeping?
Motions for posting and referral?
Those are posted and referred.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Colleagues, desk is cleared. Any announcements? Mr. Padilla?
Colleagues, as you know, but it's important for the members of the public to note that the council will be in recess this Friday. We normally meet Fridays at 10 o'clock. This Friday, for some religious observances, we will not be having councils. So after today, the next council meeting will be next Tuesday at 10:00 AM in council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Any other announcements, colleagues? Can I ask everybody to rise for adjourning motions? Ms. Glanter?
Thank you. I have two. I'd first like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Jesus Anguiano, Jr., who died on March 5th at the age of 46. He leaves his wife, mother, brother, three sisters, four daughters, one son, and two grandchildren. He had battled diabetes for a very long time and was the brother-in-law of Sandy Anguiano, who works in my office. And I'd like to also ask that we adjourn in memory of Ricardo Oderica Ramirez, who was born in Zacatecas, Mexico, on April 3rd, 1914. She passed away on March 13th in East Los Angeles. She was the mother of six, the grandmother of 16, and the great-grandmother of seven. She had a very interesting story. She was born in a cave in Zacatecas in order to escape the dangers of the Mexican Revolution. She married Ismael Oderica in 1934, and had, they had six children together, and all of the family eventually made their way to California. She arrived in the United States in 1964 with her three youngest sons, where they met the rest of the family. She made her home in Boyle Heights and East LA for almost 40 years and was very dedicated to her family and her home. And the family misses her a lot, including her grandson Roberto, who is a former staff member of mine.
Thank you, Ms. Glanter. Other adjourning motions, colleagues? Mr. Holden?
The President remembers that the lady lived a wonderful life, but certainly can be missed, because she gave so much during her lifetime in the name of Elizabeth Cox. Ms. Cox was an active member of the West Angeles Church of God in Christ, where she volunteered in the Skid Row ministry for more than 10 years, preparing meals and distributing them to the homeless men and women each Sunday. When she was a young woman, she toured the United States with an evangelistic group, singing group, called the Eleven Wonders. On one of the tours, the group performed before President Hoover. Ms. Cox was a retired, registered nurse who worked for, for more than 30 years at the County USC Hospital. She and her husband raised four children, three of whom are doctors. Ms. Cox was toward 80, 76, I got the mistake, I think. He was old at the time of her passing. She will be greatly missed by those who knew and loved her. Services will take place on Tuesday, April 22nd, at 11:00 AM at West Angeles Church of God in Christ, survived by two sisters, three sons, one daughter, and seven grandchildren. Also, Mr. President, members, sad to announce that Sergeant First Class John W. Marshall, United States Army, passed away April 8th, 2003. Sergeant Marshall is the brother of James Marshall, a member of the city family. The sergeant was killed in action in Iraq, struck by an enemy rocket propelled grenade during an ambush in Baghdad. Sergeant Marshall was a Korean soldier who was planning to retire last year after 30 years of service, but he decided to re-enlist when the possibility wore with Iraq's surface. Raised in South Central, one of nine children, he enlisted to the army after graduating from Washington High School in 1972. Marshall served in Vietnam and Desert Storm. In the current conflict, he led a platoon of 40 men and others, assigned to the Third Battalion, 15th Infantry Regiment, Third Infantry Division, based at Fort Stewart in Georgia. He has been serving as a reconnaissance scout to secure safe passage for US troops as they entered to the city of Baghdad. At age 50, he is listed as the oldest American soldier to die in the current conflict. Sergeant Marshall's parents, Odessa and Joseph, also served in the military during World War II. His mother was part of a battalion of African-American women, sent to serve overseas where she treated injured soldiers. His father served as an army quartermaster during the war. Services for Sergeant Marshall, pending, pending. He has wife, parents, and six children, several brothers and sisters. His father and mother, of course, having served in World War II during that time. Interesting to note, whereas Sergeant John W. Marshall was commanding troops of all ethnic persuasion, the father and mother served in all-black for WACs and all-black military for military personnel. It was total segregation at that time, where they did their duty for the service of our country to sustain and maintain our freedom.
Thank you. All members on that. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll. Thank you, colleagues, staff, and members of the public for joining us. We are adjourned and will reconvene on Tuesday, April 22nd. Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.